Hey, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and start our council meeting. I have Pastor Mike Seale from the Church of Christ to give us our evening prayer that will be followed by Ms. Patricia Lane with our pledge of allegiance. Y'all please stand.
Mayor McClendon and City Council members of West Memphis, thank you for allowing me the privilege of being here today. Oftentimes, my words fall way short of what we need to pray, and so what I'd like to do is read a prayer out of Scripture. It's from the words of, from the mouth of King Jehoshaphat, who was facing three enemies who had come against his nation. And he was alarmed by this and did not know what to do. So first thing he does is he declares a fast, and he gets on his knees before the people and he seeks God's help and God's blessing. Think about how special this month is, February 1st of 2024, as we begin Black History Month. We think about those that have gone before us, upon whom's shoulders that we stand because of the enemies that they fought in the past, that have helped to bring peace. We still have many enemies that we fight today, and may we remember the sacrifices. I was just a little boy of three years old when September 15th, 1963 happened, when the terrible tragic bombing of the 16th Street Baptist Church in Birmingham, Alabama took place. I was born in Birmingham, and a lot of terrible things happened in that city. I was five years old when the famous march in Selma, Alabama took place, from Selma to Montgomery. And one of the first places I ever lived was in Selma, Alabama, as a minister. And there's nothing like standing on that famous bridge, the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and realizing those that have gone before us and the sacrifices that they made. The prayer that is found in 2 Chronicles 20 is Jehoshaphat, as he seeks God and he trusts in him. So I shall read this as my prayer for today. Jehoshaphat stood up in the assembly of Judah and in Jerusalem in the temple of the Lord, and he prayed, "Oh, Lord, God of our fathers, are you not the God who is in heaven? You rule over all the kingdoms of the nations. Power and might are in your hand, and no one can withstand you. Oh, our God, did you not drive out the inhabitants of this land before your people and give it forever to the descendants, Abraham, your friend? They have lived in it and have built a sanctuary in your name. And Lord, if calamity comes upon us, whether that calamity be sword, or judgment, or plague, or famine, we will stand in your presence before this temple that bears your name. Oh, Lord, we will cry out to you in our distress, and you will hear us, and you will save us. We have enemies from Ammon and Moab and Mount Sir who have come against us. Oh, our God, will you not help us? For we have no power to face this vast army that is attacking us, and we do not know what to do, but our eyes are upon you." Father God, I thank you for this prayer of King Jehoshaphat. As he turned to you in a time of conflict and war and enemies, Father God, we face enemies in our own city, whether it be enemies of drugs, addiction, violence. We fight these enemies, Father, but there are times that it seems we have no power against them, but we know that you do. So I pray today, Father, for a blessing over this city council, for your spirit to rest upon Mayor McClendon, to give him the wisdom to govern and to guide and to instruct and to lead our city. Father, thank you for the men and the women that sit on this city council. Bless them. Bless their families, Father. Thank you for the sacrifice that they're making in their lives to lead and help and to be a blessing to this city. Lord, may we trust in you, and as Jehoshaphat said, "Our eyes are upon you." So in the name of Jesus, our Lord, we pray. Amen. Thank you, McClendon.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Muhammad.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
You.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have 10 out of 10 present, so we do have a quorum where to start our meeting. We had no bid openness. We have two sets of minutes.
January 4th.
January 4th. January 4th and January 23rd mean if there wasn't any corrections to the minutes, I get a motion to second to approve.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. All business, City Attorney?
This is the third reading of an ordinance to establish fees for permits and inspections at residential rates and commercial and industrial rates within the city limits of West Memphis, Arkansas.
There was a public hearing on this yesterday. They had no one that showed up, so they did try to discuss it with the public or take in the comments that they needed. So with that being done, I entertain a motion second.
Well, like I said, motion to strike it from the agenda. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm thinking about something else. Motion to approve. I'm already on the next one.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then, let's give that ordinance a number, please.
Ordinance number 2662, 2662.
That number is 2, 262?
2662.
Oh, 6.
2662.
Oh, 2662. All right, I got it. That number is 2662. All right, we go on to new business. But we gotta strike something off the agenda, but Ms. Muhammad, so let me explain to you what we need to do. The R1, that shouldn't have never been on there. That was a typo, I guess. Ms. George, excellent, then. So we'll go to R2 and make that R1. So can I get a motion second? You make that motion to read by title only.
I'd like to make a motion to read R1 by title only.
I got it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, Councilman Cat.
Yes, I make a motion that the old misstated R1 on the agenda be removed.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's removed. Now, City Attorney?
It's a resolution to approve the purchase agreements between the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and James Harris, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements on behalf of the city of West Memphis.
At this time, we still wait on some more information that we trying to get with the closing confidence. So I'm gonna ask you all to table it just for two weeks to the 15th.
Motion to table.
Motion to second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is table. So it's gonna be pretty quick. Permission request. Our permission to shred any financial documents, payroll, UT office documents, UT plant documents, HR documents, et cetera, for '28 and before.
I nominate Wayne Crum.
Second.
I second it, nominate it. It can be second and third.
Oh, we got, this is the first time we ever had a motion, a second and a third motion. In discussion.
All in favor.
I'll go ahead and accept that responsibility.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Crum.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
I'm telling you, this is one of the best things I've ever done.
Also, I'm gonna ask for you all to add the charity funds to the agenda for the Boys and Girls. Normally, you give it to the Boys and Girls. What would you add that to the agenda? I get a motion second to add the old charity fund.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. It was $35,618.60, which would be broke down between, if you give it to the Boys and Girls Club, $8,904.65, if you all decide to continue giving it that way.
Motion to, we distribute it four ways to each of the clubs with $8,904.65.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those charity funds are approved. Committee reports, we only had airport budget and AMP in parks.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're gonna start out with airport.
On the airport, we met, the Airport Commission met last Thursday on the 25th at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and Garber Engineers reported that in February, there will be a pre-construction meeting with crisp contractors to get a clearer projected start date for the North Apron Rehab Project. The other item discussed was there were RFQs, or what they call requests for qualifications, have been sent out to the engineering firms in order to stay compliant with the FAA guidelines. The deadline for those cementals is December the 1st at noon, which is past. But anyhow, that was the gist of the Airport Commission report.
All right, budget?
Yes, sir. Budget met on Tuesday. Everybody has a handout of the spreadsheets that Ms. Perry gave everyone. The one big thing on the agenda for that meeting was when we're gonna be able to go live with the new software. Still shooting for August 1st. That way, each council member can be able to have their own username, password, go on, view anything you need to view in real time. So it'll be a great benefit to all of you. Just anxiously waiting for that.
All right, that concludes it.
Yes, sir.
AMP?
How's everybody doing?
I'm gonna give you your short report on AMP Commission. You have the minutes in front of you, the complete minutes. So I'll give you the abbreviated version of that. AMP met on January 17th. We did have a quorum. We were missing a few of our commissioners. That was the day of the ice and snow, one of those days. But we did have a quorum. We reappointed, the commission reappointed Mike Patel and Autoria Brisbane to the AMP Commission to expire Mike in '27, and Ms. Brisbane in '28. Minutes were presented and approved unanimously. Southland asked for some sponsorship help with the Trucktoberfest that they had for some fencing, temporary fencing that they had out there. That was approved by the commission to pay for that. I updated the commission on where we were on updating the Civic Center, which is during, in the design phase right now. Hopefully, May or before this year, we'll be able to bid that building out, and by this time next year, we'll have a nice renovated Civic Center that I'm pretty excited over. New business, Delta Arts, request funds for their upcoming seasons. The commission agreed to fund Delta Arts at the amount of $50,000 a year for a possibility of three years. For sure guaranteed the one-year funding of this, and then we'll go back and review for the '25 and '26 season. West Memphis Chamber of Commerce, it was time to renew our contract with them. The contract was renewed for $25,000 for 2024, be paid out quarterly. We had one request for a small business assistance program with Blackberry Melasses, a small local restaurant, asking for reimbursement of $5,000 to go toward creating outdoor seating. Only announcements we had is, and I've been happy to tell you all this, that Delta Byways, which is our regional tourist organization, is having their banquet here at the Civic Center on February 16th, and pretty proud of the fact that Blues Off Broadway is nominated for one of the awards. So is Camp Carefree Restaurant out at Horseshoe Lake. So we've got some local folks that are up for nominations, and this is the 15 counties in the Delta, and they have their annual banquet around those 15 counties, and this year, it's gonna be here in West Memphis.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So the Delta Byways are gonna have their banquet here on the 16th?
Yes, sir.
So how do you purchase tickets or?
Probably could talk to me, and I could probably find you a ticket.
Okay.
Any of y'all, if y'all'd like to come, I'd be happy to have you, is my guess.
Okay, okay.
I got a question also. You know, I've been under the weather. I missed a couple of meetings. But Delta Arts, the next three years?
Guaranteed one year, possibility of renewing it for two others.
Okay.
So we only did it for this year, for 2024. And then, once we see how that goes, we'll consider, y'all will, you're the commission, we'll consider it for the next two years, for '24 and '25.
All right, okay.
And what that is getting is two stage plays at the auditorium and promotion of those plays.
And they gonna be at the auditorium?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're work, we're working on getting the dates for that now.
Aye.
Thank you. Go to Parks.
Yes, sir. The Parks Commission met on January 9th, and I would like to say it's such a treat and pleasure to serve as liaison for you all again. First of all, I want to announce that the Festival of Trees were most certainly beautiful. If anyone did not get a chance to go by, to look at those trees that were decorated by many various societies and people here in the city of West Memphis, you really missed a treat, because everything was just really so beautiful. And before I really get into the meat of my report, the grand opening dedicating the parks was, that was on Tuesday. That was, I believe that was January 30th, and it was just so beautiful. There were many people there, media was there. I think Mayor McClendon and his vision has done a wonderful job with that building, repurposing it for something positive, and our dream team most certainly are doing a wonderful job with their staff and getting everything up and running. So I really do appreciate you all for that, and congratulations, Mayor McClendon. Kudos to you. Also, I would like to say that the purpose of the meeting, which was held on January 9th, 2024, the objective of this meeting was to discuss closings and plans for 2023 and upcoming projects for 2024. And earlier on, we gave you an itinerary of all the things that Parks is planning to do. One of the things that we did not get a chance to do was the MLK March Community Service Day project. It was canceled due to the inclement weather. I don't know if they're planning to have it again, but we'll be letting you know if there are plans for that again, and I know it would have been a really great occasion. Also, Tilden Rogers update, baseball season will be open February 10th. Renovations on the north end of Tilden Rogers Park are scheduled to begin. The main focus is to complete maintenance on and purchase new equipment for the concession stands prior to the scheduled games within the next 30 days. Neighborhood Center update, Mr. Russell Jones stated that there would be specific groups of Parks and Recreation employees assigned to the maintenance of the High Tower Park, so it will not, you know, start looking bad or run down. There are gonna be people assigned to keep that clean, and they've got a great crew. I know most of the people work in there, great group of men and young ladies. The project at estimated time of the completion of High Tower Park is in April. I think my mic went out again. It's in April. A grand opening for the park is scheduled during the month of March, coinciding with a woman's month, women's month celebration. The celebration will consist of an exhibit of honorable women who has contributed to the growth of West Memphis. That's gonna be something beautiful. We have so many women of all different stature, colors, and everything, who's really contributed a lot to the growth of this city. The exhibit will be on display at the Roberta Jackson's Neighborhood Center. Further details will follow later. An ordinance asking for, he's looking at a city attorney, asking for one of the dollar deposit to rental of the local park is still awaiting approval from our city council and city attorney, and I know he's on it. I'm not, I'm not, I know you're on it. Mr. Jones, Ms. Carolyn Anthony, Mr. Garrett, who they are met with Coca-Cola to discuss the sale of Coca-Cola products in the concession stand. The company has agreed to contribute a significant amount of profits to a nonprofit organization chosen by the Parks and Recreation. Also, there was a meeting scheduled with Keno after our Parks meeting to examine possible partnerships and collaboration on community activities, and that's something awesome. I guess at the next council meeting, at the next Parks meeting, we'll have that report for you and how that meeting went. West Memphis Christian and ASU Missile about the field uses at Tilden Rogers, a conflict, a conflict in scheduled games was detected. So I think Mr. One of the, I think it was Mr. McCullough, discussed some information on deal 421 as far as Parks and Recreation as prepared, as to being prepared host of out-of-town teams on property owned by political suffogations of the state of Arkansas. Anyway, that was a very detailed report by Mr. McCullough, and Mayor McClendon gave a suggestion that we'll talk to the city attorney and then look into all of that a little bit further to make sure that we are safe and protected when those out-of-town gangs come here to play. We don't want to have any liabilities on our hands. Mayor McClendon's suggestion of having a grand opening on the new Parks and Recreation Administration building located on that North Avalon, and we had that. It was very glorious. Let's see. I think that's just about, I'm reading from the minutes, and I think that's just about ending my report.
Did that include?
That's gonna conclude my report. That's gonna conclude.
Also, Councilwoman Muhammad, I know you normally do your Black History program this month. I think I read where you, where you look. Okay, you wanna do it? I mean, I know you're gonna do it next week. Would you look for any suggestions or?
Right, I do have a lineup of people that you want to honor, and I did put in the message that if anyone, anyone has a suggestion, let me know like now, because I'm pulling everything together so it can be ready for that particular day. And I chose the evening times, because you never know how long a drawn out it may be, so we don't want to bore anybody.
All right.
Do you have a suggestion?
No, I was just speaking, not right now. Also, I had no appointments. I'm gonna go down to presentations made by the mayor. Actually, I'm gonna ask, our fire department has a distinctive word. Testing one, two. All right, I'm gonna call up Chief May. Will you come up, come forward, please? Bye-bye, Chief Eeler. Will you all come forward?
Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me okay? Can y'all hear me okay? My voice kind of regulated, so I mean that. Good afternoon. Today, the West Memphis Fire Department is honoring some of our personnel members that has gone above and beyond the call of duty. At this time, I would like to start with our Employee of the Year. Our Employee of the Year goes to Fire Department Secretary, Ms. Debbie Holmes. Let's give her a round of applause. I think the mayor wants to bring the podium up. Let's just take a minute. Ms. Debbie Holmes, you hold several collateral duties outside of your regular role of secretary. Ms. Holmes was very instrumental in the smooth transition from the previous administration, change of power. She played a major part in the shift transition from the Kelly Day cycle to the 4896 shift change that was a success. She's also the founder of the Fire Department's first annual nonprofit foundation in the history of the West Memphis Fire Department, allowing us to tap into streams of resources that are available to first responders that have never been tapped into in the past. Ms. Holmes, you have been and remain the backbone of the administration clerical work. We want you to know, we truly value your commitment and hard work. I couldn't do what I do without your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Anybody that knows me knows I absolutely love West Memphis, and I love the Fire Department. The Fire Department helped support me and my children for several years. I love my job, and I'm the mother. These are all my children, I mean. They are just like my children. They don't listen to me all the time. But anyway, thank you for this honor. I love the Fire Department. I love my job, and it is so, so good to see a pro-fire administration. I thank y'all all for the brand-new ambulances we got. I keep going around saying how gorgeous they are, and they are. They're unheard of in the city of West Memphis, as long as I've been connected with the Fire Department, which is a long time, that we got two brand-new ambulances at one time, plus the other apparatus we're getting, and it's just absolutely wonderful. I'm proud for these guys. I think they deserve it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Ms. Debbie, in recognition of your service, dedication, and service of the West Memphis Fire Department, we give you this award, January 18th, 2024. Our Staff Member of the Year award goes to Inspector Malik Walker.
All right.
Inspector Walker, your leadership in helping to revolutionize the inspection division with your creativity, vision, and bringing the department up to the 21st century. You hold several collateral duties also. Outside of your regular role of fire inspector, you have written several grants for the West Memphis Fire Department. You've implemented our first annual Junior Firefighter Camp Day for the youth in our city. You oversee the youth summer You oversee the Youth Summer Job Program at the Fire Department, as well as the founder of the first junior firefighting program, coaching, mentoring and exposing our youth to careers with the fire service. We want you to know, we truly value your dedication and hard work. Thank you, Inspector Walker. For his commitment to improving service provided by the Fire March Divisions and community with youth innovations, the city and Fire Department of West Memphis hereby recognizes the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Command Staff of the Year twenty twenty-three for outstanding contributions to the department. Inspector Walker presented this day, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Congratulations.
I'd like to say this is a real honor, you know, anybody that knows me knows I put my all into anything I put my mind into. Uh, and so whenever Chief gives me an assignment, uh, that's exactly what I do. I'd like to thank Chief, uh, Ely and Chief Clay for allowing me to have this opportunity. A special thanks to Chief Roberts for shepherding me in this position, as well as everybody else in the staff that embraced me when I got here. And, uh, I thank the mayor and the city council for always being there for us and, uh, helping us move this thing forward. And I just want to let y'all know we're not done yet, so thank you.
All right, all right.
At this time, I'm going to bring up Chief May, uh, to do the other two awards.
Well, good afternoon. The next two awards go for the Firefighter of the Year and the Crew of the Year Awards. Uh, the Firefighter of the Year Award is special. We allow the battalion chiefs and captains to nominate their subordinates, uh, that have performed well during the previous year on their shift. And the young man I'm about to call up, uh, cannot be prouder of. I think all of us on the staff and everybody who works with him, uh, just can't say enough about him. Uh, for his commitment to training, assisting in the renovation of Fire Station Five, being a member of the Special Operations Response or SORT team, and overall performance recognized by his battalion and the command staff, um, in addition to his motivation of passing a promotional exam at the earliest point in his career possible, because he's a motivated young man, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Chiquarius McLaurin.
West Memphis Fire Department, his commitment to training, assisting in renovation of the Fire Station Five, member of the Special Operation Team, and overall performance recognized by the battalions and staff chief, the city and Fire Department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Firefighter of the Year twenty twenty-three for outstanding contributions to the department. Lieutenant McLaren presented this day. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Chiquarius McLaurin. I just want to, uh, appreciate everybody for this award, not only this award belongs to me, but it also belongs to the rest of the crew as well. And, uh, that we are one team, one goal, one department. Thank you.
The last award for the afternoon is for the Crew of the Year Award. Uh, the Crew of the Year Award is awarded, um, based on calls that happened during the award period. So our period for nominations run from November of one year through November of the other, in hopes that we can select a crew and award it in January. Uh, Chief Ely just said, hey, you put the wrong dates for me. Uh, he's right, but January eighteenth, we were all in the middle of a, uh, ice storm and ice response. So, um, this is recognizing a crew that responded to a call, uh, at the earliest possible moment for the award period, it was from November of twenty twenty-two. I know this is the twenty twenty-three award, but, uh, this is a rescue that occurred in November of twenty twenty-two, on the twentieth. Um, the, the, the crew I'm about to call up was a multiple, uh, crew, included battalion chief, an engine company, the rescue company, and one of our ALS ambulance crews. And it was, for the second year in a row, a technical rescue. Uh, we seem to have a lot of cars that end up in a high-angle rescue situation, and this is one of them. This is an event that occurred off Interstate fifty-five, resulted in a vehicle, um, off the roadway. Uh, the crews had to respond and set up a rope rescue scenario to bring this person up. Uh, they got an early access to our paramedic care, just did a fantastic job. So, um, I'm going to read the description of the call for you. Arriving at the scene, crews found a vehicle twenty feet below grade with a seriously injured male victim trapped inside. The incident escalated to a technical rescue requiring all hands to successfully treat the patient, extricate him from the vehicle, and perform a rope rescue back to the roadway for advanced life support care and transport to the trauma center. So for actions taken to rescue a victim trapped in the vehicle below grade, call number twenty seventy-nine of twenty twenty-two, we call the following up. Battalion Chief Stephen Gray. Battalion Chief Kevin Cat. Battalion Chief Joshua Stokes. Lieutenant Paramedic Michael Etash. Lieutenant Logan Ritchie. Firefighter Thomas Guest. Firefighter Noah Holt. Firefighter Tyler Walls. And Paramedic Gentry Yates. Their individual plaques read as follows. The West Memphis Fire Department, the city and Fire Department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Fire of the Crew, Fire Crew Member of the Year twenty twenty-three for saving of life. For the awardee, for actions taken to rescue a victim trapped in a vehicle below grade on November twentieth, twenty twenty-two, call number twenty seventy-nine, presented this day.
At this time, I'm having one of my battalions come up and speak a little bit about, uh, the department and what went on at the scene.
This, um, man, this is, this is an honor for sure. Um, like I said, the crew actually worked flawlessly on this call. This was a high-angle rescue below grade, twenty feet down, in water. It was a, we got really lucky. We had just had a rescue training course two weeks before, and you could see that the training paid off for sure. It was a great call. The crews did absolutely perfect to save this man's life. So thank you to the chiefs, to the city council and the mayor for getting us the training and the funding we need so that we can do our job the best way we can. Thank you.
Chief Cat said it perfectly. Um, we just want to thank you guys for allowing us to train, to go off to, um, different classes, um, different states. Um, none of these guys up here do this for this award, but it is nice to, um, get recognized. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. In closing, uh, Chief Cat and Stokes both brought up the, uh, the fact of the training that occurred. Uh, we used the new training facility just prior to this call to practice the rope rescue techniques used in the call. So, um, your investments are paying dividends now. And I know every day, uh, no one likes to come up and get awards, everybody's pretty humble. I know they're very self-assured, uh, but they're competent, they're caring, and they touch someone in your wards every single day. So, thanks again to everybody and thank you for your support.
Truly as mayor, I want to say thank you all to this department that does an excellent job for our city under the leadership of Chief Ely, the great job that he does, as well as under Chief Clay for his leadership and commitment. And in the entire command staff, from Chief Roberts to Chief May, Chief Brackinson, as well as, uh, Chief McLaren, and all the battalion chief and the men and women that serves up under them to make our department be what it is. They are doing an excellent job. And trust me, all the things that this council is approving and passing for, it's not going unnoticed, they utilizing it and making the most thing that's important is our community's safety. So once again, thank you guys.
All right, I had, I had just had a few announcements, also to add to our, our fire department and the awesome job they're doing. I just want, I know during the last couple of meetings, we had a couple of events, we had, uh, our element shelter, our nets and Curly's Secrets Element Shelter and Adoption Center. I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Carrie Ficello, who is doing an excellent job in leading that department and her commitment as well. I just want to recognize her. Also, with our Parks and Recreation Department, I want to recognize Mr. Jones, uh, Russell Jones, who's the director, but also his, his, his dream team staff, um, Ms. Anthony, as well as Mr. Garrett, who they have been doing the awesome job. And I just see so many great things that are going, that's coming out of our parks and recreation, and I just look forward to the exciting things this year, and especially when High Tower is completed and, and Tilden Rogers is completed. But some of the, one of the other things I'm so excited about is all of the great things that are doing in the other parks, and I think this whole community is going to benefit from it. And lastly, I, I, I want to throw a personal shout-out to our code enforcement department, which is ran under, uh, Mr. Chad Bowman, with, uh, Officer Ford and Mr. George Philip, who called for them, they have done an excellent job. Uh, I think I called one council member that showed him a video, he called me back, then I called him the next morning, then he called me. If it just, uh, if you go by and see what they have done, and he specifically knows exactly what I'm talking about, and not just stopping that they go on the fifteenth to thirteenth, however, to make sure that it's an area that we can be proud of and call our own, is definitely going to support our Parks and Recreation Department. I just want to definitely thank them as well. All right, I'm going to move down to system request. Now, I see some people, I know that this vote is going to be on February the fifteenth, but, uh, I see councilmen, uh, smiling here, but I do see, uh, Mr. Michael Harris, or, uh, were you going to speak on this behalf?
Well, uh, the folks at council, in light of, uh, the council's time and the consideration of the third meeting being on the fifteenth, they have, uh, agreed to just tangle, maybe the march today until that time.
Okay. All right, thank you guys, thank you all. Next we have, uh, my good friend, Ms. Georgia Broadway, will you come forward? Uh, how this procedure, well, Mrs. and Mr. Broadway, yeah, how this procedure work? Actually, you all submitted your all application, and what the council would do, look over for this two weeks, and then on the fifteenth, they would approve it. But you all want to add something to it right now that they would consider? You all.
Look at what you had. Go ahead, what you had? Tell them what you had.
Yes, um, I'm trying to get my, um, pre-approval license for, uh, uh, transportation.
And, and, and we had the application, when what the council would do, they would look over it, it's in our package, they would look over it, and then next two weeks, just come back and, uh, they are, they are, whatever, approve it or deny, however, but they would look over, and that's the procedure, we know, and let them look over it for two weeks.
Oh, okay.
But you all had anything to add to the count?
No.
Well, we just trying to multiply and help out West Memphis.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a question. Are you going to pick that sixth Super Bowl win by the forty-nineers in that van? All right, well, thank, thank you, just be back two weeks, we have that.
Good luck, forty-nineers.
Yeah. Well, we. Well, you know, we, uh, I know we got, we, we in a room full of cowboys, but they at home watching us next Sunday, but, uh, I have nothing else to add. Anyone else have anything they want to bring? Uh, can I get a, uh, emotional adjourn? On the paper, I oppose, let's go forty-nineers.